Welcome to those of you who are in the audience and to our commissioners. Since we did not adjourn at our last budget meeting, we do not have to...
We did adjourn.
Somebody just told me we didn't.
Yeah, we did.
The clerk?
We did. Well, I take all of that back. Somebody gave me the wrong information. So, we don't know.
Do I defer to the clerk or the attorney?
We didn't have an official motion to adjourn at the last meeting.
We didn't?
I thought the chair adjourned the meeting, but I guess it didn't follow the rules procedure. Okay.
So, I go one. Okay. The, since we did not officially adjourn, our last budget meeting will be resuming that today. But we do have to take the rolls, so if you all will...
Thank you for having us.
Do we need to excuse him from this or from the meeting?
Let's excuse, let me hit the roll call with Chis and Blank, and then if you'd like to excuse him from your budget workshop, you can do that, and we can do another roll call when you open your regular meeting.
Okay. Would you make that motion? So move that we excuse Commissioner Melvin. In a second. All in favor, please vote. Okay. Thank you. All right. The approval of the agenda?
So move.
So move, second? Somebody second their...
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Let's vote.
This is the agenda for the budget workshop.
Yes. And we are doing a follow-up tonight before our regular board meeting for the year 2019-20 budget workshop. So I'll turn it over to our manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a follow-up to the workshops the board's already held on the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920, I have a couple items I just want to present to the board. Don't want to get ahead of the presentations yet to occur. But in regards to the public health budget, we did discover that on the two outreach workers for infant mortality, they're actually grant-funded. Those were 2.80 positions, that health actually had included those in the budget request. So the good news is, they're in the budget. So they're, they weren't cut as, as, as we initially indicated. So the board, in effect, doesn't have to wrangle over that if you allow those to be in the budget. One thing we looked at in terms of investment earnings for the new year, we had, had projected about $750,000 in investment earnings. Now that we have more data in terms of months of investment earnings, we realized we could probably up that a little bit. And I've got a couple recommendations. Again, I don't want to get ahead of the presentations, but a couple areas, three areas I'd recommend, maybe looking at tweaking what's on the table. One would be to fund the dental assistant or the dental lab at the Health Department. That's a .80 position, the less than full-time. It's about a $20,000 cost to the county. In terms of DSS, we've looked at, again, in terms of investment earnings, if we up investment earnings by about $158,000, we can do the dental assistant. There's also four positions within DSS that are funded primarily by state and federal dollars. We can go into more details on those. The last and third area that I would recommend tweak to would be a reserve in our non-departmental budget. Right now, we have $50,000 in there in reserve for economic development, aside and apart from what we do from the Development Commission, to raise that by 50,000, just to 100,000 flat figure for future purposes, as may be needed or, and/or warranted. So that's really the only follow-ups I have. I do have one other item I just want to bring to the board's attention. If staff can hand out their information on House Bill 667. The Association of County Commissioners sent out an update regarding legislation in the General Assembly, and one, one matter that's come to light is, there's a House Bill 667. It's called the Local Option Sales Tax Flexibility Bill. This has passed the House and it's crossed over to the Senate. Basically, this is a bill that will allow counties to fully leverage up to the existing cap of sales tax across the state. It would be either, in Pitt County's case, currently we have a 7% flat sales tax. The max is seven and a quarter. Some states have, some counties have seven and three-quarters due to a transit option. So the short answer, the short explanation on this is that currently, in Article 46, Pitt County via voter referendum about 10 years ago implemented Article 46, says allows an additional quarter cent sales tax. Without that, we would have a six and three-quarters cent sales tax, but with it, we have a flat seven. That quarter cent sales tax by board vote and, and action is dedicated toward capital construction for schools, for community college, and K through 12. The, this, this bill that is now in the Senate that's crossed over would allow the counties to fully realize, go up another quarter cent, in our case, and others maybe half a cent. They would be via voter referendum, and we put together a draft resolution. So this resolution is supportive of House Bill 667, Local Option Sales Tax Flexibility for your consideration. And the chair, if I may read this, it's real short.
Yes.
Says, "Whereas under Article 46, current law, counties are authorized to levy a minimum of a quarter cent local sales tax which voters must approve in a referendum. And whereas House Bill 667 authorizes counties to level the Article 46 sales tax at either a quarter cent or half cent with current sales tax caps via a voter referendum. Whereas counties may use the tax for public school capital needs, teacher supplements, community college needs, or any public purpose. Whereas House Bill 667 supports one of the NCACC's top five priority goals to quote, 'support efforts to preserve and expand the existing local revenue base of counties and authorize local option revenue sources already given to any other jurisdiction to all counties.' And whereas House Bill 667 will provide all counties the flexibility to use revenue from Article 46 general tax purpose, then therefore, now therefore be resolved, Pitt County Board of Commissioners supports House Bill 667." So this is, the reason to bring this before you is for budget needs, i.e. school supplements. If the board were to consider this resolution and passing it on to the members of our delegation or all the members in the Senate and the House, the General Assembly, if we had this authority and if the board so wanted to put a referendum on the ballot, if it was authorized, if it became law, you could then dedicate that for this source, and thus it would be not on the backs of the ad verum property tax, but on a sales tax. And again, this is not expanding any cap that they're in place. It's just going, utilizing the existing cap. And I did talk to the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, regarding our current quarter cent sales tax. That would stay in place. If we had, if this became law, we would then have the option to work with the, the state in terms of the ballot language for an additional quarter cent for one of these purposes, whether it's capital school construction, whether it's teacher supplements or whatever. So I just present that as information, and you can give us direction if that's something you would like to pursue or not, or consider at a later time.
So if we're interested in this and supporting it, and it goes to the schools, it could be used for teacher raises or employee raises over the years?
Well, the way, the way the bill is right now would be teacher supplements.
Supplements, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I didn't mean raises. Yes. So, yes.
Could we use it?
For all of them. And your third prayer says, I mean, names to teachers supplement school, community college, or can you, could you use?
You could. But the big but is, 10 years ago, when we went before the voters in Pitt County for the quarter cent local ops and sales tax, we made sure that it was a narrow window of explanation as to what we were going to use it for. And even with that, we had the majority vote approved it, but it wasn't a far majority vote. So I think if you make, the wider you make it, maybe the less resistant people might be to vote for it, if they see it as for a specific purpose, whether capital and capital in schools and teacher supplements or one or the other, it'd probably have a better chance of being passed rather than defeated.
And it's not a tremendous amount of money, about what?
4.5 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, about 4.5 million annually.
I mean, that, I do realize that's a lot of money. But it's for one of those things that they come to us always for in budgets. So it could be used for all of these, or any of these, or one of those.
Yeah. But that's what I mean when it says, "or any public purpose," why not say, "and any public..."
At this point, you could just, if you were so inclined, approve it wide open as it is, that the General Assembly passes this bill, then you decide at the time, if you were to vote to put it on a ballot, if it became law, what, how the question would read. You don't have to define that at this point in time necessarily.
We just need to get them there now, and if they, if it does pass.
I was told there was, I mean, again, the House has passed this. I've been told there's some hesitancy in the Senate. So the Association of County Commissioners urged us to contact our senators and to provide support for this, if, if the board was so inclined.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion now or wait for the meeting?
Well, I, you could do it now if you wanted. If you were inclined, it's up to you.
I'd like a motion, I think. Would you all, everybody kind of nodding, I'd guess?
I'm not nodding.
Okay.
For several reasons. This money could also be used to supplement the money that comes out of the general fund right now that we use for schools. It's just like the argument that was made back with the, with the lottery. And many of us argued that that money will eventually be used to supplement, not, not supplement, but will be used to, in place of money that was already part of the budget. And I see this being potentially the same thing. Now, from a sales tax, I think the sales tax is the fairest tax of all, because everybody's got to pay it. If we're going to enact this, then what kind of reduction are we going to have in our general fund? I mean...
You could use it.
A quarter cent comes out to about $60 per, per person. Because if you look at the amount of money that is earned in, in North Carolina by the average family, and then remember what I was talking about, it's only a penny, one cent sales tax. It's only a penny. No, that was like $260 or $280. Wasn't a penny. And so this is going to be a quarter of that. So it's about $60. How much is that? Isn't that about two cents on our tax rate?
One penny is 1.3 million.
Yeah. But let's say somebody got a $200,000 house. And so...
$60, yes.
So this is going to be, you know, two to three cent, the equivalent of two to three cents. On top of, we're asking for two to three cents. On top of Eastern Pines asking for three cents or close to three cents, I have a problem with this. Because if, if you're, if it's going to be earmarked just for schools, I'm not going to vote for it. If it's going to be earmarked to where it can be used anywhere for any purpose, then I might be, I might consider it.
That's what I was... Okay. Just to clear that up, that's what this says for any public purpose.
Right now, the resolution is wide open, per what, per what, how the bills, House Bill stipulates.
Yeah. But that, then if it's wide open, why do you put in there, "may use for public schools, capital needs, teacher supplements, community college, or any public purpose." Why not just say, "or any public purpose"? It's misleading. It's trying to tell people, it, to me, it's a bait and switch. People will hear it's going to go to the school system, and yet it doesn't have to.
We were trying to, to copy the language in the bill.
I understand that.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Nunley?
You know, Tom, respectfully, I think that this commission currently, in this budget cycle, we're presented with a number of challenges to meet demand in the market so that we're competitive. And I think that if this bill puts us in a position to be able to do that in the future without increasing the ad verum tax rate, consumption-based tax like this does provide a little bit more flexibility, especially counties in the east, to try to keep our proper, our, our cost of living low, keep our, you know, the attractiveness of, of moving here and locating and raising a family. So I think that this type of, this type of method, if it were to be passed at the state level, would provide communities in the east a certain level of flexibility that we, we're feeling that pressure now just because we have a lower tax base. I think this affords us another opportunity to tap, tap into, especially a place like Pitt County, where we have a lot of people who come here and visit, visit and shop in our community that don't live in Pitt County, and it provides us an opportunity to, to support some of our needs so that we're even more marketable. So I, I would be in support of this.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that we send this forward? It doesn't mean, it's just saying that we're supporting it in the other counties, correct? We need to get it in there so that they know the number of counties that are supporting this. It doesn't mean it's going to happen.
And for that to happen, it takes a referendum.
Right. Sure.
Voted by people.
Exactly. Yeah.
Can it by committee?
I move that we...
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. Okay. It passes, so. Next.
Madam Chair, so ahead, other than calling up the departments you have on the agenda, if you want to do the fire departments first?
Yes.
We have two of the three fire departments represented here this afternoon, and we made contact with all three of them. In terms of Blackjack, Blackjack did, I did talk to their, I reached out to their president, and then I talked to their chief last week. He said he thought he would be able to come. If he could not come, he would provide a statement, and staff, I think, has their statement as to the explanation for a half penny increase. The, the statement you're going to get passed out will state that the half penny is equivalent to $8,000 in revenue. The Blackjack is, a penny does not equate to a whole lot of revenue per se compared to some of the other fire departments. They have a whole lot more tax base. And in this... I'll let you get a copy of it. Reference, it talks about the increase to cover, increase operating costs and greater budget allocation for grants. Again, just over $8,000 in additional revenue. Operating costs, including vehicle maintenance, costs due to two main fire engines aging and requiring more costly repairs and maintenance. Says one of the two engines is in a replacement schedule within the next five years. So they increased that item by 5,000. Repairs on fire service equipment is more costly than regular vehicles. They also increased their amount by $3,000 to allow them to apply for grant funding. So this is a state-matching grant that we anticipate each year and which allows to buy needed equipment for half the price. That's basically, there's other information about the 100% volunteer department, 40 square miles, talks about over 100 calls per year and such. So that's their rationale for the half cent tax increase.
Okay. Do, are we going to hear from all of them first, do you think?
I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
Any questions about this one?
I would like to know if the Blackjack community, if they have been, I guess, surveyed or asked about this at all.
Yeah. But each of the 20 volunteer fire departments has a three-person fire district commission that is separate apart, as I understand it, from the nonprofit board that renders and makes a recommendation to you each year regarding the budget and the tax rate. And this is recommended by that three-person commission. And they represent the community, and we assume they are in contact and pulse with the community per se.
So we assume, but...
Right.
Well, they're the ones that, they're the only ones that can request.
So is there an opportunity for the community to come before that board and...
The opportunity would be when you hold the public hearing on June the 4th.
I mean, no, but they can come before that board.
That board.
I guess if they were to hold a meeting and, a community-wide meeting and ask for input.
But I think they can come to any board meeting or fire department, meeting, I would think, anyway.
Yeah. Their nonprofit board, I would assume so.
I, I just wondered if there's been some communication to the community about it. That's all.
Okay. So we need to hear the other ones?
Yes. We also have the full, ask, I guess we'll start with Gary Arnold with Eastern Pines. Would you go first?
Actually, I'll speak instead of Grandpa, I'll, I'll, the President.
I'm sorry, Bob. Yes.
That's all right.
Yeah, we made contact with both Gary and Bob. I forgot which one was going to speak tonight.
Thank you for allowing us to come before you all today. In our budget request, we had asked for a two and three-quarter cent increase to allow us to construct a new building to replace a structure that we currently have on, on the property that's been on-site for over 30, well, for 33 years. The building was actually moved there from Greenville Boulevard in the mid-'80s. It, it was sitting where the current Kentucky Fried Chicken sits next to Parkers on Greenville Boulevard. So I'm really not sure how long that building had been there before it was moved out to the Eastern Pines area. It was actually dismantled and then put back up where it currently sits 33 years ago. We've started to have considerable issues with the structure itself. I don't know exactly how the foundations and things were done back in those days, but the, one of the major issues is that we're starting to see the walls, the exterior walls, separate from the rest of the building. So we're starting to have a lot of moisture, rainwater coming down inside the walls. We've got rotten windows, things of that nature. So we're concerned about that. Probably 75% of the windows that are in the property right now have got some sort of water, moisture damage to them that would need to be replaced. We've also had a lot of issues with the, with the roof. Again, it's a 33-year-old roof, and we have patched and band-aided and issues with that, trying to not go into the full expense of having to replace the entire roof. We've seen that with, within the leaks within the, the building, you know, the ceiling tiles and things of that nature, along with some of the hidden, hidden spaces inside of the walls. And we're concerned that there will be mold and some mildew issues, if not already, certainly going, going forward. And a lot of these issues are caused, we've had the, the soil tested by one of the engineers in town, and we found that the soil content is very poor. We, and it's caused the building to shift and settle, and those, and that's a lot of the problem that we're seeing. And that really can't be rectified with the building sitting on the property as it, as it currently fits. We've also had plumbing issues and electrical issues because the building's old, and we're just concerned that that's going to be creating some problems also down the road. The current building that we're talking about also, we have two of our fire apparatus in that building, and then the Eastern Pines EMS is also housed in that building. And we have, over the years, had to replace part of the apparatus bay floor in, in that building because of settling and some water issues. We've also had to replace, and I want to share some cost figures with you in a minute, but also had to replace the concrete pad in front of the building because of the subsoil moving and some washing away that we did have a collapse in part of that front pad. One of the other things, too, is from a, from a standpoint of our response times with apparatus in two different buildings. If we need apparatus from the other building, all of the gear and everyone's items that they need are in one building, and they have to go next door to the other building. So that has created some issues with response times. And one of the last thing about that is from a safety issue in the, in the existing fire station where we've got four pieces of apparatus. The apparatus, over the years, as you know, have gotten much larger. The building that we're, that we're in, where we've got the four pieces of apparatus, there's probably about a, a foot clearance between the front bumper of the trucks and the bay door. On the backside of the, of the truck, we've probably got about six feet clearance between the tailboard bumper and the wall. But up against that wall, we've also got our gear lockers. So we're probably talking about, only about a four-foot clearance between the rear, rear step bumper of the apparatus and the, the locker. So that can create a safety issue as well, because there's not much room back there for people to maneuver and to get by safely. Over the years, and this goes back probably the past three or four years, on what we've spent as more of a Band-Aid, duct tape, if you will, replacing the front pad in front of that building, we spent $39,952 to replace the pad. The, we replaced the floor in two bays within the, the building that we're looking to demolish, and at a cost of $16,091. The roof repairs, $8,793. Our septic system has also failed because of the soil around the property. And we have been Band-Aiding that for a while. The Health Department's been very gracious, as they know we're trying to do some things to get that rectified. And we've spent $5,599 on septic issues in the past several years. Plumbing expenses for repair work, we've had done $1,102, and then electrical work, $875, for a total of $72,400 that we've spent on this building that we feel like at this point, as we can see, we're having more issues with the soil and with the building separating the walls. And so we're looking at, that we would just be throwing more good money after bad, if you will, if we were to continue to Band-Aid and make just the repairs. We can't fix the problems, but we can repair them and then give it a little bit of extra life. But it's not, at some point, we're going to have to be facing that we've got some major issues, which we do now. We've currently also been working with Jimmy Height from the Height Architects Farm, as well as Mike Baldwin, who is a, a local civil engineer, in looking at our property, in looking at the soil, what we can do to that, do on that property that will last for a long time to come. And we've all come to the, come to the conclusion that truly that building shouldn't be, can't be, continued to be repaired. It needs to be replaced. And that's why we're here today, to talk about that. One of the things that we will do, if, if we are successful in moving forward with the new property, is once, once that building that currently sits there has been removed, the poor soil is going to be excavated and removed, and we'll have good backfield soil brought in before any construction is done. It will actually raise the level of that property, so we won't have those recurring problems that we're having now with the property and with the drought. with the drainage and things of that nature. One of the things we've also had to do with inside the building is, we've, a manual sump pump is in the bay floor drains. As we continue, when we have all the heavy rains and whatnot, those pumps come into play because we're having water seeping back up into the building, into the drains, and so we're having to pump that back out, and that's a problem that we can't fix, so we're just, that's one of the things that we've had to do. What we're looking to do, in the picture that you see up there, is a new station that has a total of about 16,800 square feet. Of that, about 7,500 square feet is the station proper itself, with the offices, day room, training facility, kitchen, sleeping quarters, and another 8,200 square feet for the apparatus. It would be a five-bay, drive-through building. We could then get all of our apparatus under one roof, including the ladder, so that everything is under the one roof that would also assist with our response times. When we're through with this project and the building of the new station, the existing fire station that's, if you're familiar with out there, that's on the left-hand side of the parking lot, we will be upfitting that to allow rescue, the EMS folks to have a new home there with new sleeping quarters, they'll have a bigger day room than what they currently have and whatnot, so, you know, we're already making those plans for them going forward as well. We did talk with a number of different lending institutions as we began this process. The thing that we wanted to do, because we knew we were gonna be looking at asking for a tax increase to actually fund the building, what we're asking for, the two and three-quarter cent, it does nothing but cover the debt service, that's not going into the operating budget. We're holding the operating budget like it is, and then the two and three-quarter cent just covers the debt service. We went, you know, in coming up with the two and three-quarter cent and in talking with the different lenders, we wanted to go as long as we could with an amortization period, knowing that we were gonna have to ask for a tax increase, so hoping that we can keep that tax increase request as low as we possibly could, because, you know, we all have to pay that same tax, you know, so we want, you know, we don't want to strap our district residents with any more than we really would, you know, need to ask them to do. So what we're looking at, we've gotten verbal approval, of course, all this is pending the revenue, you can't get the loan without having the approval of knowing where, you know, and how you're gonna pay for it, but having a 30-year amortized loan, that's gonna put the payments at roughly about $190,000 a year over that 30-year period. Would we have liked to have gone shorter? Sure, but that would have shown the necessity for a larger tax increase, and we just didn't want to strap that on the backs of our district residents, they've been very good to us over the years, and we don't want to hurt them at all. In looking at the, sort of an average, if you will, I took $200,000 house, looking at the current tax rate that we have of five cent, and that would be, that would put their fire tax amount at $100. Going, adding the additional two and three-quarter cent adds another $55, so it'll go from $100 to $155. Now, we can offset that, in 2016, we went through the Department of Insurance Rating Review and Inspection, and our fire rating dropped from a seven to a five, and with that, on average, that saves the homeowner between $90 and $100 a year on their homeowner's insurance. So with the insurance premium savings that they have seen because of the reduction in our fire rating, that insurance savings can, will offset the cost of what they would be paying in a tax increase. So, you know, we feel good about that, that the overall, what they were paying prior to our insurance rating and their property tax, by us dropping, having the rate drop and having their premium drop, you know, helps us to offset what we're coming back now and asking for. And one of the things, too, with the new building, it would allow us to have newer up-to-date training facility within the building, as well as some safer areas outside for us to continue our training, and hopefully that would pay off in the long run as the next time that we have an insurance department review. Hopefully, we can drop from a five to something lower, we were very close to a four, but didn't quite get to the four, so we can look, you know, so we would hope that we can drop that even further, which would allow our district residents to have even a greater discount on their fire insurance. We've always prided ourselves with the relationship that we have with our residents in our area. Now, we've always opened our doors to the property owners in the neighborhood, scout groups, homeowners association, different businesses have held meetings in our facilities, and we're gonna continue to do that in a new building. Our building has also been used for a number of years as a polling place with the Department of, with the Elections Group. That would continue in a new building as well. We've enjoyed having them and want to have that relationship for a long time to come, so, you know, our building is their building, because it belongs to all of us, so we have always enjoyed that open relationship. And finally, we're, we've always prided ourselves in being good stewards of the money that the taxpayers have so graciously given us. I think it's been over eight years, I could go back eight years and see that we haven't asked for any money in an increase, and it's probably been a number of years longer than that, I just couldn't go back any further than that, that we've come before you all asking for a tax increase. We've always lived within our means, we know the difference in our needs and our wants, and we put our emphasis on, from a budget standpoint, in what we need versus what we want, is that that helps us to be the best steward we can for the funds, because at the end of the day, we're all having to pay the taxes, you know, and I am extremely confident as I stand here that if our tax increase was approved, you know, we would not be coming back to this body for a considerable period of time asking for more, and this building especially is going to take us into the future, a good 40, 50 more years, long, long after I'm gone, long after Chief Arnold's gone, that building will still be there and serve in the community. So I just, again, appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions or comments, anybody?
I have a couple. What's the tax base for Eastern Pines? Isn't it about 600 million?
734,000, excuse me, 734 million.
The new building, who would physically own title to that building?
The Eastern Pines Fire Rescue, Inc.
Okay, but that was, that's not county, right? That's really private.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So we'd be using private, our public funds for a private building. Have you considered asking Greenville Utilities Corporation to run a sewer line out there? I mean, if they're gonna do things and tout themselves to be, trying to be proactive for the community, they ought to run a sewer line out there, put a pumping line, and then you don't have to worry about the septic system. Septics, even with what you're proposing, unless you've got a really large field, it'll cost a lot of money, and it's, it probably won't last 30 years. It might, but I'd be questioning that.
Would you answer your question? No, sir, we have not talked to GUC.
As far as the insurance, I don't know about the other people on this board, but my insurance never goes down, it always goes up. I could show you where it's always increasing, year after year after year, and I don't have any claims against it. Maybe I got the wrong insurance, maybe you can give me some pointers as to who I might want to go to. Okay, I got other questions, but I'd like to actually come out there and visit sometime to be able to ask probably more questions and physically see some of the damage that you just said the other facility has.
You're always welcome at any time.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Will just come down, do you have a comment?
No, Madam Chair, just thank you for coming and presenting.
Mary?
I would like to know, how did you go about informing your taxpayers of the increase?
We have not done a specific mailing or anything informing the district residents. I know there's been a number of things in the newspaper, I think this meeting as well, talking about the increase that we're requesting, so I know that our folks have, would have had access to that, but we have not gone door-to-door or person-to-person.
What about a sign out front or something?
We haven't done that, but we can certainly look into doing something like that, yes, ma'am.
How often does your department have its meetings?
We meet monthly.
And are the people aware of them?
We meet monthly, we meet the fourth Monday of every month, as we have over the past, I've been there 30 years, and we've done that 30, for the past 30 years, and our meetings have always been open to the public. We have had community residents come out there and sit in our meetings, we've had community residents come sit in our board meetings, you know, so we have nothing to hide, and we're happy to have them.
One last question. Have you spoken randomly to any residents in that fire district?
As a matter of fact, we have.
About this possibility?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we have. We've talked, you know, we've got, I've got a number of friends who live in the, live in the district who are not associated with the fire department, and I have, you know, mentioned to them what we're planning on doing, and that we have been in the process of looking at a new building and things of that nature, and all of the folks that I have spoken with have been very positive in that, well, that would be great, it would be a great asset to have, they appreciate what we do, and they want to, and they want to see us continue to prosper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stahl, Brian?
Just thanks for all your good work.
Thank you.
I want to say, I want to commend you for, as you said, being good stewards, and also the relationship that, it sounds like that you have with the residents in that fire district. I do want to go back to something Tom said about contacting GUC, I think that would be something to, you know, to look into about that, what lines, the septic lines, or whatever is supposed to run for that. Do you all still have your annual barbecue?
Yes, ma'am, we do, and those, we have a separate entity, a separate corporation that actually handles the barbecue, none of those funds flow through either fire or EMS's budget. The Eastern Pines Fire Rescue Foundation was set up, oh gosh, probably 10, 15 years ago, for that very reason. All of the funds that are raised through those barbecues are used by fire and EMS for the purchase of other equipment, none of those funds are a part of any operating line within the budget. We do budget the purchase of equipment every year. What the foundation funds are used for is if we want to purchase something, or if we have a need to purchase something that is outside of our existing operating budget, then our fire board can go before the foundation board and request X amount of dollars for the purchase of, we'll say, five-inch hose, or new turnout gear, or whatever, if we need additional pieces of equipment outside of what we normally budget. So that's what, that's how those funds are used, and nothing, none of the revenue, none of the expenses of the barbecues flow through our fire department budget.
Well, again, I thank you for, as I said, being good stewards and letting the community use the building for different activities, so, and also, you mentioned a discount, where Tom said he doesn't get a discount, his insurance doesn't go down in it, but I appreciate you offering the citizens of that district a discount, you know, so, again, that's, you ask it in one hand, and, you know, for money, and then, so you're kind of giving a return in the other hand, so, thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Do you know what the potential savings going from a level five to a level four would be?
I do not, Gary, do you? Is it the same figure? Okay, I was mistaken there. Going to a five is as low as it goes, I was mistaken on that, so, thank you. Okay. I don't know that we can get to a three, but we would love to.
Okay, certainly a new facility would help in that direction.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Corley, how about the, does GUC, how far do they go out towards that direction?
Staff is...
Do we know?
Staff is telling me that Arbor Hills at Hardy Road is about a mile away, I just text while we're talking here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, next we have Winterville Volunteer Fire Department.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, I'm not sure which, you call 5 o'clock. I'll wait till the papers pass around before I start. My name is Jonathan Hilt, I'm the fire chief for the Winterville Community Fire Department.
I don't know if you're gonna need it or not, but...
Is that enough?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good evening, just wanted to talk for a few minutes about why we're asking for a tax increase, and for us, it's really short, sweet, and to the point, for three main reasons. One is funding for equipment. I mentioned here below in the paper that you have in front of you that we currently own 24 Scott SCBA bottles, that's the bottles that the firefighters wear on their backs to help them breathe when they go into a hazardous environment, and those are about $840 per bottle, and we received all these bottles on a grant about 15 years ago, and now they're due for replacement. So we've been unsuccessful in trying to acquire a federal grant that we achieved previously 15 years ago to replace those bottles, and so now we need to purchase new ones. In addition to that, you'll see, I mentioned on here also that there's the air packs, the bat packs, if you will, that the bottles attach to, we also have to replace several of those, and those are not cheap as well, they're $5,815 per pack, so, nice expense there, but that's one answer to why we're asking for a tax increase. Secondly, is apparatus maintenance. We have five vehicles in our fleet currently, and you'll see in the chart there in paragraph number two, also the number of trucks that we have and the year that they were, they were built. We added a new truck to our budget this, or to our fleet this past budget year, and to allow us to continue having the same amount of money allotted per truck for maintenance, that's another reason why we're asking for a tax increase. You'll see that our first out engine, which is Engine 4101 there, is a 2008 model truck, our second out engine is a 1996 model truck, so it also has some years on, and of course, the older it gets, the more maintenance it also requires. And the third answer for why we're asking for a tax increase is for staffing. Currently, we staff the station 45 hours per week, that's one firefighter working seven, or eight to five, rather, Monday through Friday. We'd like to increase that to 70 hours per week, which would be 10-hour days, Monday through Sunday. We know that's difficult to find volunteers through the day, especially on weekends, when families like to go to the Bee's, they have baseball games, soccer games, so this one person that helps us throughout the day is a huge asset to us, they're there to ensure a truck really leaves the station in an appropriate amount of... They're there to ensure a truck leaves the station in an appropriate amount of time, to check off equipment if somebody wants to stop by for a station tour. Somebody's always there at the station during the day to help facilitate those needs. But again, those are just the three main focal points for why we're asking for a tax increase. What benefit does that bring? Currently, where the, if this tax increase goes through, we'd be the seventh lowest tax rate of the 20 departments in the county. And I can assure you that throughout the budget discussions, maintaining a very low tax rate and among the lowest in the county has been very important to not just the members of the fire department, but also to the members of our board. We too like to be good stewards of the money that we're given. For the average home in our district, this would mean about $2.42 increase per month. So, a small amount of increase per home, but for the fire department, that's a huge difference in our operating budget. Tremendous gains that can be made there at low expense to the homeowners. And again, it would help to address not really wants of the fire departments, but needs of the fire department. These air packs, the air bottles are things that we have to have in order to breathe inside of a hazardous environment. The apparatus maintenance, it's important that we respond to trucks in appropriate amount of time. If we can't repair them, then the authorities will respond in that appropriate amount of time. And also staffing, a huge difference it makes to have that one person there during the day and certainly a huge benefit to us. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any question you may have.
Okay. Let's start at this end. Lauren?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions.
Yes, sir.
And questions?
Did I miss, how much of a tax increase?
It's just shy of two cents.
1.84 cents.
1.4?
Eight-four.
Eight, 1.84.
Okay. All right. No questions?
Okay.
And so, do you get support from the town of Winterville?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Do you get support from the town?
Do we get support from them? Funding support? No, sir, we do not.
So what is your operating budget?
Right now, it's just over $200,000. With a tax increase to go through, it would be about $287,000 per year.
Is that it? Okay.
No questions?
Chris?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Tom? Okay?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. If that's it for the fire districts, we'll move forward with our social services follow-up.
Good. So the board has some questions, wanted some clarity regarding the DSS budget request and communication with Janet Elliott, the DSS director, and she has a presentation to make to you and I think has several handouts to hopefully clarify their budget requests.
I will try to be brief. Okay. I'll wait till some of these get around, so. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity.
We have a commissioner wants to ask a question before we start.
Okay.
I'm curious, when we covered the request for these three fire districts, do we vote on them per district or do we vote on them as a whole?
When you adopt the budget ordinance, do you adopt it for the entire budget package, the abolum tax rate, the fire departments, EMS, industrial development, so all one package?
All right. Okay. Thank you. See you then.
Okay. So I certainly understand there were some questions. I know there were some questions while I was presenting and I believe there were some the last day y'all met. So I am pleased to come back and provide the answers, I hope, to the questions I think you have. And certainly, we're not going to lose a slide this time, so. Okay. So, it's my understanding that one of the questions you had was about my priorities, knowing full well that we're not going to be able to fund 24 positions. The 24 positions that I asked for are the priorities that we identified in the department as we pared things down. In my review with Mr. Elliott, we pared things down even further. Today, I'm here to say that there are really nine critical staff positions. Four of those, Mr. Elliott has already put into the budget. And then the other five, I'm including the foreign language interpreter, social workers for APS and guardianship, and the paralegal would be the additional budget priorities for us. Based on the fact that it takes us about 60 to 90 days to recruit, I can also say that for this first year, we would not be spending all the money that it would take to cover this, so there'd be some savings in the first year. There's some additional documentation on the staff request if you go to page one of the presentation, the handouts. So the difference in what the manager recommended and what we have here is a totaling county money of about $119,000 between what he recommended and what this is. So, the 185 part of that's already in the proposed recommendations. So I know there was a question about organizational structure, how we are set up, based on some of the conversations that I, we've had. So this is our O chart. You will see also in the handouts, a slightly different version of the O chart as well as the position classifications that the department has. So you can kind of line everything up and see what's what, how many are of each classification. So there's more detail there. We have basically six key divisions in our agency. We have obviously our fiscal division, our legal department. The four big divisions are economic support, family support, child welfare, and our adult services area. And we are divided in the two buildings and so you can see what that looks like. I know staff additions in the recent years, there has been some question about that. And clearly, we have, y'all have been very generous with us and provided positions over the years and I certainly appreciate that. In the 2014-15 year, that was as I was coming and there had been positions lost during the economic downturn, at the same time our caseloads were growing during that period of time. So in the 14-15 year, the acting director brought forward a request and you all did provide 31.5 positions for the department, primarily in economic services. Three of the positions were in child welfare. The federal government also helped with that in that they moved us from a 50-50 split to a 75-25 split for the cost. And so this was done in part because of the rising caseloads. It was also done because of the NC FAST change. Many of you do remember how much fun that was. And so, in the following years, those were definitely all my budgets and so we have asked for some positions and received some of the positions we've needed. Again, these were primarily based on caseload growth and changes in what the state was requiring us or the federal government was requiring us to do. You will see the 10.5, that is when we added four folks to do backfill for when we have vacancies, turnover kinds of things, because the work still has to go on. And if you remember, those of you who were here, we had a conversation about doing that through lapse salary. And after much discussion, four positions were added, two for economic services and two for child welfare to try and help with that turnover and those vacancies, because again, it takes, you know, 60 to 90 days to fill a position. And anytime y'all have a question, please stop me. One of the questions was about efficiency enhancements. What has the department done to try and do some things beyond just asking for staff positions? And you will see in your handout, there are two pages of things that I could brainstorm over just in a short period of time. That would be pages five and six of your handout. I've just highlighted a few here. We immediately reorganized the department and restructured our units based on the availability of staff and where our highest needs were. You do have to remember though, I can't just move a position because all of our positions are funded at very different levels. And so if I move a 75% position to a 50% funding stream, it can create some issues and we have to work through that. That doesn't mean we won't do it, it just means you have to work through some of those funding issues. We implemented a strategic plan and our strategic plan has six key goals. One is to improve the opportunities for economic self-sufficiency for our community, safety in support of our children, safety in support of our adults, increase our communication, coordination, and cooperation both internally and externally with our community partners, because we can't do it by ourselves and so we jointly partner with other agencies in the community to do a lot of things. Improve staff development and improve the agency organization. So under each of these six planned goals, there's a significant list of things that we're working on to make all this happen and make it improve. Under the improve agency organization, that is a look at everything we do, at least annually. And before we go anywhere, we say, what can we do differently? How can we move a position? Where is the greatest need at this point in time? So that's part of that improve agency organization. We applied for and were granted the opportunity to participate in a food stamp collaborative using business process reengineering principles. It was three states, nine counties across three states. The federal government helped us with working through that. It has made a significant difference in the department. We are able to process our cases more timely, do our recertifications more timely. And it's something in food stamps called churn. If somebody doesn't get their stuff in, their verification's in, then we terminate the case. Well, they're back in the next month to apply again and that's the churn. And so through this process, we've done some work to try and reduce that churn, because it's easier to do the recertification than it is to do a whole new application. We partner with community organizations to assist clients with applications for the Low Income Energy Assistance Program. Ms. Perkins Williams has one of those organizations that she works with. That gets the application locations out into the community, to where the clients are, as opposed to having to come into the Human Services Center. Those organizations took 739 applications for us this past year. We still process them, but they took them for us. And so that's 739 interviews we didn't have to do. We have cross-trained our intake staff in Medicaid and food stamps so that the majority of our intake staff can do both a Medicaid application and a food stamp application. That means one interview, that means one research for the various verifications that you have to do. You still have to key two separate applications in the NC FAST system. They are not, that doesn't save any time there, but it does save time for us and it saves time for the folks having to tell their story more than one time. We use retirees a lot for our short-term, high-volume projects. They come back for two or three months, they help us get that project done, energy being one of those. We don't have enough staff to do energy plus all the other things, but if you bring the retirees back for three months, they can help us get that done and allows our staff to do what else they need to do. We've automated our child welfare services, our adult protective services, and our child support through those operations, through the use of our Northwood software. It is, it allows us to have the case record online where we can see it. It allows us to do things out in the field and we can do the documentation while we're out there, come back, and then you just sync that information so that it is uploaded into the system. And we could talk a long time about Northwoods, but I'll skip on. We've implemented the use of electronic signature pads wherever possible, so that we don't have to print out the document, have the person sign it, and then scan the document back in. So that saves us some things. We contracted with Community Crossroads. Community Crossroads has their expertise, is in homelessness and in finding shelter for folks. So rather than having our staff do all the work around homelessness when we have people come into our crisis program and say, you know, I've been evicted, I have no place to go, what can you do to help me? We partner with Community Crossroads and they help us with getting those folks back into housing, help them prevent maybe being evicted from their housing. So they do get some of our TANF dollars to do that with and they provide us a monthly report on that. We have established an employment and training unit to help with our food stamp recipients, increase their earnings, and that the goal is of course, to help them move off of food stamps and not need those services any longer. We recently obtained a $316,000 grant to automate our reception area, such that when you come in the door, you will be able to self-register and then you will be able to, if you have documents, scan those documents in. We'll still need to interact with those folks in various ways, but it's going to be a much simpler system. It's kind of like when you go to social security. Some of you've been there, some haven't. But it's on the screen, you can see who's being served, you can track what's going on, and we're using a number as opposed to calling out, Ms. Ward, your Medicaid application, come on back, you know. So it is much more, you know, confidential for the folks that are there. We hope to have that up and running in the next, by the first part of the year, and by that I mean July, August, somewhere in that time period. It's going to take some getting used to, obviously, but we're excited about the opportunity. We will still have to move the documents that are scanned to the caseworker, so there'll be a lot of work still behind, but we don't actually have to scan them anymore and the person will get a receipt showing what they brought in. We've got a couple of other grants pending that we hope to be able to do some things to help the agency and improve our service delivery. But again, these are just a few. Some of these didn't get on the two-page sheet, you know, because we thought of them afterwards, but there's a variety of things going on that our staff are doing and I'm just real excited about what they're getting done. Also, your community, the Pitt County Community Funds, our Christmas program for our children, and we do not use any tax dollars to provide Christmas for our foster children. That is totally donations and without them, we would have some sad children. So anyway, so that's some of the information about efficiency measures. If you go to pages seven, eight, and nine of your handout, you will see some state caseloads data. It would be too busy for a slide, for sure. You can see in APS and guardianship that we are significantly understaffed based on the cases that we're serving. And where some places, we're pretty close to where we need to be. Some places, the state gives us no caseload standard. The caseload standard is you get the job done within the time you need to get the job done, you meet your performance deadline, et cetera. So you can get, and this clearly isn't all of our positions, but these are the bulk of our positions, the high usage positions. I mean, I didn't put anything in here with our fiscal staff. I didn't do anything with our front desk staff, because we're looking at a variety of different things. Certainly, just looking at this code doesn't tell you a lot about what it means, but it does give you some idea of what we're doing. For example, in foster care, this is also adoption work. This is also, you know, all that work that has to be done to bring a child into care and work with getting that child back home, but it just says foster care. Our links coordinator works with those children who are 14 to 18 to help them move and be prepared for when they graduate from foster care, to help them understand budgeting, to help them understand a variety of things. So that's what that young lady does and she's probably got a little over 120 kids that she works with through various activities in the agency. Our licensing folks, they do placement, they monitor the foster homes, they train the foster homes, they recruit the foster homes. So there's a lot. I could, you know, I could spend a lot of time talking about a lot of this. If you flip over on the back, the interpreters, some of this stuff is harder to quantify, but you can see some of the things that we're doing there. I will say, I have nothing in here for paralegal and of course, that is one of the positions I'm asking for. And all of our adult services work just about, all of our child welfare work and all of our child support work requires court activity. And there's a lot of court activity there. In the prior presentation, in the documentation, we talked about in the written documentation, the numbers of cases that they're doing and the volume. And if you look at our child support area just alone, we have 8,356 cases under order to enforce. We did 24,341 enforcement actions last year, 454 paternities established, and 989 new cases under order. Every one of those things required interaction from a paralegal and we can do more with the paralegals than not having them. So they're cost-effective. So that's the caseload data. I threw in a little bit about turnover, just because we have had a significant amount of turnover. If you look at '17, '18, our turnover, and then in calendar year 2018, you can already begin to see that we have turned a corner on turnover and the turnover is reducing. Part of that has to do with the fact that a lot of that turnover was in child welfare. Some of the staffing that we've gotten has helped relieve some of the stress there. Generally run, as I said last time, 12 to 15 vacancies a month and on average, we have about three folks out for some reason extended out. We have babies in our department and so people go out on maternity leave and stuff and you still got to keep the job going. So we have those kinds of things going on and I thought that might be helpful for you to have that information. The rest of what we're going to talk about now very quickly is I know there was some interest in what our performance looks like. And so I'm using the memorandum of understanding information for the most part. And we have used the period July through November 2018 because... And we have used the period July through November 2018 because that's the most recent figure that we have from the state. And I will also indicate that there are still some negotiation going on some of these performance measures because the data is still questionable. But we can work through this and give you some sense of where we stand. You can see in child welfare, for the most part, we are not meeting the target. We are not alone in that problem. These are the federal targets, and the state of North Carolina has these targets also. So you can see for that six months, we are not meeting the targets. Now, in several places, we are close, and the subsequent findings of maltreatment being a high number is not a good thing. And it fluctuates by month. It fluctuates by quarter. So there is that data. If you look at child support and daycare, you can see we are meeting more of the performance measures here. I can tell you that right now with child support, we are not meeting 100%. Typically, we meet four out of the five performance requirements with no problem. One is always, we get real close, but we don't quite meet it. So that kind of gives you a sense of where we are with that. The state has said that the child support figures need to be an annual figure, not a monthly figure, because it builds on itself each month. So that is that information. For our housing, energy, employment, assistance, these are the performance measures that the state is looking at in the MOU, and you can see where we are. Crisis, the problem with that is I have five staff, and on the days it's 35 or 40 degrees outside, I can have 120 people in there at no point, you know, no time. And so we have to take and process that application. If they have no heat, we have to have that application processed within 24 hours. And so I get a lot of complaints because we don't move real fast just because there's so many people waiting and so few people. For some of our folks, if your heat is not off yet, we have 48 hours to process that case. And that means get the verifications, do the interviews, get with the heating source, and, you know, approve everything with them so that they'll keep the heat on or turn the heat back on. We have some ideas about how to improve this. There's been some policy changes. We have some ideas about how to work on the volume also, and so hopefully that will be resolved shortly or at least much improved. For our food and nutrition, the first four items are the MOU data for our food and nutrition program. You see, we are meeting those. We actually transferred a position to the program integrity claims processing because we were not meeting that standard. We were able to shift somebody around, and we are now meeting that standard. The degree of processing accuracy is not part of the MOU, but it is a federal requirement, and the state of North Carolina has potentially been under sanction multiple times for not meeting the error rate. And so we certainly measure that and push to be at 97%. So we are doing much better there, and again, it is not something that we're being measured for, for the MOU. Our adult protection and employment assistance measures. The MOU has abuse and exploitation. As you see, we're not meeting the target with the abuse reports. We are meeting the target this month for the period of time we're looking at right now at 100%. And the reason that says November 18th, there were several months that we didn't have any information in the system, so it couldn't be measured. Either we didn't have any exploitation reports, which was typically that would be the issue. And then the reason the abuse neglect report issue exists is because we have the staff to get out and do the initial investigation. We can go out and do that initial. It's moving the case along to closure because there are more coming in the front door. And so once you've kind of assessed it, it kind of gets on the back burner unless it's a really high critical case. So that's the issue there. Our work first, nobody in the state pretty much is meeting those, and probably nobody in the country pretty much is meeting those. Those are very difficult to meet with the numbers of folks that we currently have. We occasionally have one two-parent family, maybe two two-parent families that are in this, and so, you know, if they don't meet their hours, it's really hard to do that. So the Medicaid process and measures are not part of the MOU at all, and that's because they're in their own separate law. So you can look and see that we're doing pretty well in all of those areas. Our process and accuracy certainly could improve, but we are doing pretty well there. Again, the feds hold the state at 97%, and so that's why that figure's there. Our overdue recertifications through March were at 4.7%. For the month of April, we were overdue, we had about 1,500 cases carried forward. We are now down to almost all of those being done. We still have about 1,007 cases to do for May. So having the adequate staffing to do this is critical for us right now. What we are doing is overtime work. We have all hands on deck. We've got folks from quality control trying to help during overtime. We have folks from our intake unit trying to help during overtime. We've also got one of our retirees back 20 hours a week to try and help us get over this hump. The figures are interesting for Medicaid. We had one month that we had over 3,000 cases to process, review cases to process. We have four months that the review cases were below 2,000, and we had seven months where the review cases were over 2,000. And you've got that same volume of people trying to make that happen, and so that certainly has been an issue for us. So now you look at our applications processed. We are held accountable to processing all of our applications within the 90% standard, and you can see that our Medicaid for disabled, we dropped below a little bit one month, and you can see that our other Medicaid, we're doing well with it. We have to meet a standard of every month. If we miss three months back-to-back, we're in corrective action. If we miss five months out of 12, we're in corrective action, and ultimately, there's a takeover provision in this. Pitt County will never get to that point under my leadership. That is not what we're going to do, but that 12 months constantly rolls. Here's our Medicaid overdue recertifications, and you can see it goes up and it goes down. Right now, in March, it was down, but in April, it's shot back up. So that just is a real quick idea there. Our overtime, I try really hard to keep overtime down. Obviously, we have to get anything over 60 hours approved for a specific worker, but you can see that we have the economic support in black is going back up. You can see where our adult services are up. So some of that is reflection of the numbers of cases coming in and the staffing. Right now, 12 of the last 22 months, I've been over 2,000 hours, and that tracks a lot with the vacancies, and that's agency-wide. So if you, you know, divide 280 people into that, but it's in certain areas that it's really been tricky. The economic services folks in the first four months of this year accrued over 1,000 hours in overtime. They have worked a lot of that down, but that was where they have been. That was my fast walk through this. It's a lot of data. I hope I answered the questions that you had. I may have created more questions for you. You will see in your white packet, all of the MOU mandated performance standards. It includes the standard measure, the county performance measure, the rationale and the authority, and then how often that is reported, whether it's annually or monthly that we're being held accountable. So that starts on page 11. I'll stop. What you got?
We'll start down at this end and come this way.
Jan, if the state of North Carolina were to expand the Medicaid like is being suggested, how will that affect you or not at all?
It will affect us. At this point, my understanding, it's around 5,6500 for Pitt County, and all of those folks would have to do some type of application. So my assumption is that they would have to come through us.
And what would that equate to in?
Well, right now, we can't.
You might need to process it.
Well, you know, the application processing would be tricky. At the review point, though, I can tell you, we carry about 1,000 cases for our review folks, 2,100 cases. So you could look, that would be, what, four or five positions? And then at the front door, you'd have some positions.
So we would have a cost. You estimate there would be a cost.
You would pick up 25% of that staff cost, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Jan, for the presentation. And I know for me in particular, it's really nice to see on a granular level where the department needs are. We were faced with a rather large.
I get it.
Rather large request without a lot of detail, and so it's really helpful for us to see the needs and also to see maybe some of the dirty laundry, so to speak. I think that's productive. I have a couple of questions just on, in particular areas, child welfare performance. Within that area, out of your request for positions, what would be tagged? I guess is it part and parcel of improving our metrics on this, in this department?
Well, you know, for the last year, we've been extremely short-staffed, and part of that has been due to turnover. Turnover has about killed us. And when you try to bring folks in, it's tough to bring people in. We are not the most popular place to be a social worker because we work, you go to work at 6:00 in the morning some mornings, and you might be here till 8:00 at night some nights. It's not every day, you know, but that happens. And so that's, if you could work, you know, in a school and work, you know, those hours, you'd much rather be a social worker there. It's very taxing work. I mean, so getting, we have done a lot of work in trying to get folks more trained in certain activities so that it's not falling on just one person. For example, to hold the child and family teams, and you have to have those. So now we've spread that out. We're doing a lot more in our foster care area so that then we can move folks along. We have, you know, right now, the biggest issue for me is training, and we've asked for the trainer, and we have asked for an interpreter, and that's because I had 103 cases last year that spoke Spanish. And trying to get that done, in fact, one of our folks has already commented that it is taking a toll on her mentally to deal with the child protective services issues that she's seeing as an interpreter. But, you know, we're doing some work on trying to reduce the child abuse coming in the front door. We're partnering with folks like the health department to do some of the things. We're working closely with child advocacy and other kinds of folks. Having trained staff is the biggest thing, and it is, you know, being able to keep those staff. And it is, you know, we added an extra supervisor a year or so ago, thanks to y'all, and that has helped us work more closely with the staff that we've got to make sure we're hitting those metrics.
That hit my next question on the supervisor side. You know, obviously, sometimes having sufficient supervision and support can help, you know, the caseworkers process properly and help, you know, if it's rich at the bottom, it gets better. I was just wondering, obviously, that position's been added. What can we do as a commission? Obviously, we're just holding the purse strings here, but what can we do in your eyes on child welfare and any of the other areas of need to make the job easier for you all?
Well, I mean, again, I want to thank you.
You know, not just saying money, but just.
I know, I know, and I want to thank you too because you gave me a foster care supervisor position this last year. And those two supervisory positions, one in the assessment area and then the one in foster care, have made a huge difference because when you've got a lot of baby social workers, and I mean that respectfully, I mean, they're new to the job, having a good, strong supervisor who can actually do the work with you, help you process what you're doing. We've done a lot of training internally to try and help our supervisors do a better job with that right now. In fact, we're doing some leadership training to help our supervisors do more in the way of motivation and support of their staff because, again, I've got to stop the turnover. So, you know, we're doing grant money to try and do some things to help give folks tools. This signs of safety, for example, would give our child welfare workers a real different kind of framework to address the families that they're serving, to be much more creative and broad-thinking in what safety looks like for a family. And so, I mean, we've put a little bit of money in the budget for that. We've applied for a grant to try and take that even further. So, don't know if we'll get it, but that's a critical, I think that kind of support and structure is critical. We're partnering with the School of Social Work to get as many interns in here as we can. Again, that brings new blood in and new thought processes. So, I mean, those are some of the things.
So my last question, and I'll, I'll push it on down the road. Obviously, we live in a very diverse county and growing diverse, and your ask for an interpreter is well-taken. I wondered on a hiring side, if as a department, you started to prioritize, when you're looking at caseworkers, bilingualism.
Wait, I'm sorry. I'm grinning here into the camera. We do that. In fact, we set that as a priority higher. When we advertise, we ask for bilingual staff, and in fact, we will give you a bump in pay if you come in bilingual. And that has been more helpful on the economic services side. I have at least one person at the front desk that's bilingual, so that's been a great thing. But again, when you are, you can't stop what you're doing to go out and interpret, and so having those interpreters to do that kind of thing if a bilingual person is handy is just critical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Perkins-Williams?
One of the problems that I can recall, Ms. Elliott, is the technology slowdown, which stresses the staff. And I know that most of the commissioners are talking about the fact that you just can't get to whatever you want at the time because of what comes down the pipe. My question to you is, we're not given the data to make some decisions. If, how can you see getting that changed? Because 24 positions are a lot.
Right.
And just listening and going to all of those social services meetings, you and your staff are faced with a lot, and it's stressful, especially you're sitting there and it takes 10 to 15 minutes to get one thing in a field. So is there any effort to read data so that you can, because if you have the data, you can find a way to deal with the problem. So do you have that?
We use a lot of data. You know, we have our performance indicators that we use internally. They may not necessarily match with the MOU because right now, we still can't get into the data warehouse where that information is being pulled from. So we do a lot of our own data analysis. We need to do a whole lot more of that because I think it will help us guide where we're going. I mean, one of the conversations I've had recently is, do we need to station folks in a certain area of town because that's where a lot of the activity is occurring? Do we need to be doing more out in, you know, this area or that area? And so looking at that kind of data and mining that kind of data is something we really need to do. We're using some of that along with our strategic plan to see how we're moving things. Again, it's important. I think that's part of why we asked for that data position some years ago when y'all gave it to us. So we're getting more and more in the way of data compared to where we were.
Is the system in Riley doing a little better?
Well, you don't ask me that today. All of last week, we were on red because it was on slowdown. It was not processing. In fact, today, part of the counties were totally cut off from the system for about three hours, and that would be in the economic services and the child welfare folks that are piloting. But it's better than where it was in, you know, 2014, '15.
Thank you. So Graham?
I'm sorry, is that the, Alex?
Thank you, Ms. Elliott, for all the details and the work that goes into this. This would help educate me a little bit about, could you just talk to me a little about individual work first hours under the adult protection? And those, I'm not quite sure what that is and how those numbers are reflected in, like, the number of cases?
The work first, you asked about the work first.
Yes, ma'am. The individual and the two-parent work first.
Right. In the work first world, we are held accountable for certain work activities and hours of And if you don't do that, then you get terminated, okay? And so those things can be job search, those things can be, you know, some training kinds of activities or whatever. What we find in work first is the caseload turns over a lot. of activities or whatever. What we find in work first is the caseload turns over a lot because we do push people to do these kinds of activities. There's also a lot of drug testing going on with work first. And so, depending on how that person is participating can significantly impact them meeting the hours that they have to meet. And then we look at the numbers who meet those hours. And again, in the two-parent households, since we never have more than one or two of those, and we can go months sometimes without a two-parent household, it's, you can quickly have a problem, just because if one of them doesn't do what they need to do.
So, that's a small pool we're talking about.
It's a very small pool. Our total work first population is about 300.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I'll ask the manager to kind of tell us where we're standing with some of these things that were left over.
Jan?
I have a question for you. On the first page of your presentation, we have the nine additional positions.
Yes, sir.
Where it says total county expense in the right-hand column, is that the expense for the partial year of 1920 or is that fully loaded?
That would be the total expense.
Okay, for a full year if they were all 12 months. And of the nine, you were telling the board, in the initial budget, you have four recommended, but there's five not.
Right. There's five that I was pushing for in addition to those four. And, you know, the first quarter being out of there, you'd miss about $45,000 in funding and expense.
So, in talking to our finance director, Brian Barnett, him and I looking over the budget, looking over the projected investment earnings for the county, we were able to come back and recommend four more of those positions. One would be an income maintenance caseworker, two in Economic Services. It's at 25% cost to the county, and we said about $12,000 a year. The interpreter in the Services Division, that's a 40% county cost, that would be about $12,000. And then two of the social worker threes, there's a little bit higher cost, it's 50% participation, about $32,000 apiece. So, we're saying $88,000. We could look at doing a slight bump up on investment earnings to cover those four, if the board was so inclined. So, in effect, of the 24 original positions, funded positions, I'd only recommended four. Now I'm recommending four more. So, I guess, eight total.
Eight altogether.
Yeah, eight total, four plus four.
And you may have some help with at least the Adult Services position because there's almost $900,000 in the budget that has not passed yet at the state level to fund additional positions.
So, with that information that you just gave us, we'll consider that when we're looking at the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Okay. Next to the agenda, I think Brian's going to come up and have some additional financial follow-up.
I'm going to start by handing out a copy of the presentation first. I have a copy of the presentation. You have a copy of a memo, and then I have one more listed item. So, in all, you should have three documents with this particular financial follow-up.
The man I was placed in front of you earlier.
Oh, we already had this.
Your agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the first piece of information from a financial standpoint that you asked when we ended our budget workshop was to look at the other counties across the state to see what they were doing in regards to their ad valorem tax rate. As you guys may not be aware, that is public information, but just like with our budget, typically, counties do not like to release that information until they've had an opportunity to actually address their own Board of Commissioners. So, we were actually one of the early birds when we went on May 6th, but ultimately, if you do include us, I was able to reach out to 36 other counties across the state. 13 counties are not recommending any change in their ad valorem. 16 are, and then seven counties that you see listed here are either presenting tonight or this week. So, I should have some more additional information. Of the 13 counties that did not, that are not recommending or proposing a tax rate change, here's a list. It's across the state, some smaller, some bigger. Also, kind of gives you a picture of some of the other tax rates that the other counties have out there. Interestingly, some of these counties are not proposing a tax change this year, but they did last year. So, it's not necessarily a good or bad sign whether or not they are this year. The change last year could have benefited them to a point that is helping them this particular year. In all, I had 16 counties that are looking at some type of change. On the third slide, you will see, these are counties that are proposing a tax rate change that is not involving reappraisal or revenue neutral. As you can see, again, I have here listed their current tax rate, I have their proposed tax rate, and then the actual tax incentives that they're actually changing. The highest was Alamance County at 8 cent, down to Orange County, that 1.5 cent change in the proposed tax rate. I also have one here, our 3 cent that we did propose, the manager proposed in the budget. So, it kind of gives you a picture across the state when you're looking at non-reappraisal tax rate changes.
Brian, in full disclosure, some of those counties, the tax rate change in terms of increase is via a voter referendum on capital facilities such as Alamance, Wake, I can't remember the others.
Those are the main two, yes.
But even, I think even the case of Alamance, the majority of it was via voter referendum on school debt, but there was even a penny in addition to that. I think the same thing with Wake, part was voter referendum and part was additional.
Yes. In Wake, you have 6.36 cent change for that involved voter referendum on primarily schools and quality of living, recreation projects, and the other two, roughly 2 cent change was based on just operational, the same issues that we're dealing with, they're dealing with in Wake County is part of their 6.36 cent change. On your fourth slide, these are your counties that have gone through the reappraisal process recently, and as required by law, they do have to produce the revenue neutral tax rate that would have produced the same amount of revenue without the reappraisal. We're not required to accept that tax rate, but we do have to publish it. So, what I wanted to show you was their current tax rate, but also what revenue neutral would produce and then what they're actually producing. So, out of the eight counties here, only every county here decided to at least take revenue neutral. Two went revenue neutral. The other six had an opportunity to go revenue neutral, and they actually went above. Now, some of them still have a lower tax rate than they started, but revenue neutral is kind of the starting point, if you want to look at it from a budgetary standpoint in this particular fiscal year. So, professionally, I see that as an increase if you go above, if you look at revenue neutral and going above it. So, like in the case of Mecklenburg County, which was the biggest change across the state, you will see significantly from the 82 cent down to the 61 cent. That does sound like an incredible tax break, but their revenue neutral was actually 59 cent. So, they're just under 2 cent above the revenue neutral. And lastly, what I wanted to show you guys is a current tax rate picture of our surrounding counties. As you can see, from Craven around to Beaufort, Craven and Beaufort in particular, these are our two counties that do touch the beach. They are significantly lower than we are, but our surrounding counties, we are the lowest at the current tax rate, not what's being proposed. I was not able to get proposed tax rates for all of these counties, but I did want to give you a picture of what our neighbors are currently sitting on from a tax standpoint to give you some type of indication.
Any questions, Brian, about this? Good information, I hope that we will receive.
In your memo that went out, it's part of your packet, and you also have in front of you, there were three questions that were proposed, and I kind of wanted to just run through those real quick. The first question involved looking at our vacant positions. If you actually look at the second page of your memo, we took a look at our vacant positions specifically on May 13th. Some of those positions are actually in the process of being interviewed. Some of them were in the process of waiting on hearing back from an offer. Some of those could have started after this point, but I did want to give you a global picture of our vacant positions across all of our departments. Keep in mind, when you get into Social Services and Public Health, not all of those positions are fully general fund funded, but the dollar amount here is the dollar amount that represents the general fund's contribution. So, the question was, if we were to look at those vacant positions, could that offset the proposed tax rate? Strictly from a dollar bill standpoint, if you look at our vacant positions as they sit currently, and you look at the positions that we are recommending in the budget, it would roughly be an equivalency of that tax rate increase. However, I do want to point out that you all do set service levels. So, any positions that we remove would have an impact on the service levels that we're able to provide to our citizens. And from a budgetary standpoint, as you all know, that we do have a fund balance plug, which is our savings, that we use to balance our budget every year. We do, we know professionally that we're not going to be on 100% field on all the positions every year, and we do rely on that budgetary excess to fall back into our fund balance to keep us within our policy of 18 to 20%. So, eliminating all of our vacant positions, not only is going to have that service level impact, but it could potentially affect that, the fund balance policy that you all have set. So, that was our vacant position question. The second question was asked about revow. Now, revow is a process that we are starting, and we go full swing next fiscal year. Once we're done with that reappraisal process, obviously, all of our property owners on the real property side will have an opportunity to appeal, question any of the new values. But the question was, do we have to accept revenue neutral? I think you've seen from the other counties and what I've explained, from a general statute standpoint, we do not have to accept revenue neutral. We just have to publish what that rate would indicate, what that rate would be had we not had the reappraisal process. Revenue neutral and a reappraisal, just because you go revenue neutral does not mean it's going to lessen the burden from a taxpayer standpoint because you could potentially have a higher property value, even though the revenue neutral rate may be lower. And the third question, and it's part of my last handout, the third question that was proposed was, do we have any more logical cuts to make in our budget? What I'm passing out here is not the full nearly $11 million worth of cuts that we made on the general fund side, but we wanted to give you a picture, I think it's roughly $7.5 million, of where we did make cuts. We, this is my 13th budget. This is the first year that I've ever sat down with a manager and gone line by line within a budget.
Not our first year. We do it every year, so.
But, so, we have looked under every rock. We've looked at service levels. We've looked at moving money around, moved at people around. That does not mean that cuts can stop. Obviously, you all can direct us to make more cuts, but we wanted to give you a picture of what we have done through this process, just to give you a snapshot. If you need the full list, obviously, we can provide that to you. But at this rate, this is what we're, the manager has proposed, to try to keep our service levels where we are so that we can be best in the East. So, that was part of the memo that went out. It's part of your Friday packet. If you have any other financial questions, glad to answer.
You answered all my questions in your presentation.
Anybody?
Thanks, Brian.
Everybody okay? Thank you, Brian. That's very good. It's the first time I've seen this.
So, if I can just follow up?
Yes, sir.
So, I guess in effect, we need some directive from the board to develop the final recommended budget as we march toward the June 4th public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920. If you would like it pretty much as drafted, other than the things we've discussed here and the general input and consensus we have gleaned from the board, we can do that. Or if the board is looking for more specific changes, we would need to hear that now. We would prefer to carry the board's preferred budget to the public hearing and hopefully have most of the changes covered prior to the public hearing. Not to say the public couldn't influence the process and make the board reconsider tweaking something within the budget, but hopefully, the majority would be nailed down to the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody have a motion they want to make to move forward, or do what?
So, where do we stand on the supplements for the school teachers?
Right now, they are not included. We are recommending 25% of the school system's 4.4 million dollar increase at a $1.8 million, $1.8 million dollar increase in current expense that covers all their fixed expenses. It would take, you want to review those numbers on what would it do to do the supplements? I don't have it in my head.
I think we saw that.
Well, I've got it.
Yeah, we saw that, I think.
Yeah.
If that's something the board would like included at some level, we would need direction on that and consensus from hopefully the majority of the board so that we could feel confident going into the public hearing process that the majority of the board supports that at some level.
I have a question.
Do you want to, Brian, answer that question first?
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Albright?
Yeah, I'd love to see us at least get started on getting those supplements up.
That, or you could defer back to the House Bill 667 scenario, if that were to become an option. Obviously, that is a more, not long-range, but mid-range option. If it were to become effective, it would require, A, the General Assembly to approve it, B, you as a board then to pass a resolution to ask for the vote on the ballot, and then C, for the public then to be in agreement via the ballot question to put into effect, for whatever purpose that you would so decide at some future point in time.
I do not have that one page with me. I think I may have passed out all my copies.
Okay, so to do a 7% supplement, and right now, they're at 3.5 or 5?
They're at 5 for existing teachers and 3.5 for new.
So, to bring everybody to a 7% supplement, it'd be $2 million, almost $2.1 million at a 1.61 cent additional tax increase. And then, we take it all the way up to 18%, but if you want it 8%, you talk about 2.43 pennies, 9% at 3.24, and then obviously, it goes on up from there. So, even just to bump them from where they are now at the 5 and 3.5, depending whether you're a new teacher or you're a, I don't know if the term is seasoned or...
Experienced.
Experienced teacher, it'd be $2.1 million in additional ad valorem tax revenues needed and additional 1.61 cents on the rate. And right now, we are recommending on the ad valorem rate to go up by 3 cents as it stands today.
And that would be in addition to that?
So, if we were to, we would need consensus from this commission for your office to move forward with preparing a budget, if there were consensus hypothetically. Say, if we were to meet the Pitt County Schools' recommendation of 7%, we would be asking for a 1.6 cent increase on the proposed, current proposed budget in order to meet that.
That's what it would cost unless you directed otherwise on how to meet that expense.
Well, I think at a minimum, just to speak openly, I think at a minimum, if we're looking at the long sheet in New Hanover, Buncombe Counties, Asheville, and Wilmington, and if we recall that the hearing, we were falling way behind in the area of teacher supplements and being competitive for young teachers. We're losing, Ethan Linker quoted, we lose a ton of teachers to Wake County. Obviously, I don't think we can jump up to 16, 17% right away, but I certainly like to think that this commission, if we're putting education as a priority and we are serious about investing and growing our young professional population in particular, and including continuing to fuel the, I think what a lot of folks would agree is a real positive direction on the ground here in Pitt County, I would really hope that this commission could recommend at a minimum, the Pitt County Schools' recommended 7% at a minimum.
I agree. It's a hard thing to say, but I think that's a high priority.
So, that boosted one more.
Yes, Ms. Huggins. We just passed the resolution.
We just passed the resolution having to do with, what is it, House Bill 667, and we passed that, and that would have to do with school supplement and as to whatever else we want to do with it. So, I would prefer to go that way, and with the proposed budget that the manager is proposing with this resolution in the, as a fallback, I guess.
As far as supplement?
Yes, as far as supplement. And again, you know, I know that, and I support education as our top priority, so it's not to say that, you know, we're not keeping it as our top priority, but right now, that's my preferred way.
Instead of adding the additional?
Yes, instead of adding an additional.
So, what happens if, excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, what happens if it's to 6% across, so we're talking about 3.5 for some teachers and 5% right now, is that right? And where the proposal was to take it to 7% for all, is that, is that right?
Yes.
And so, there's a three-point, there's a big jump, and I like the idea of leveling that.